Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. We are so excited. We welcome you from the Metropolitan Seventh Day Adventist Church in Hyattsville, Maryland. We are so happy to think that we have the opportunity to host a town hall meeting for the city of Hyattsville with our council member, which will be introduced to you in just a few moments. And so we'd like to thank each and every one of you. We have a few housekeeping items that our host will share with you. But one of them is, is that no matter what platform you are joining from, you are welcome to share any questions and suggestions that you have. You can put those questions and suggestions in any of the chat rooms available, and we will take your questions and we will share them with the council. If we do not get to your question, we will still share your question or your suggestion with the council, and then we will make that available by a link. You can check back to our church website, or maybe by the end of this program, we'll be able to share that link with you where the council will, would have responded to your question or your suggestion, and you will see that in a written format by a link. My name is Pastor Novella Smith. I am the youth pastor of the Metropolitan Seventh Day Adventist Church in Hyattsville, Maryland. And it is my pleasure to be able to be with you all this evening for this important town hall meeting. I would like to introduce to you our host for the evening. Our host is none other than Ms. Jason McFarland. He is a math educator in the state of Maryland. He is a graduate of Washington Adventist University. He is a professional man who has a deep heart for politics and equality, as well as the progression of our young people and their education. And so the voice you will hear now is that of Mr. Jason McFarland, our host for the evening. Mr. McFarland?
Hello, everyone. I hope this evening is treating everyone fine. I just want to say it's a blessing to be here. It's an honor to be the moderator, our host, and I hope that we will all get our questions answered, that we will attack this in a nice and friendly manner, because we're here to talk, to converse. We're not here to to attack and point fingers. We're here to share ideas and come to a solution. So today, we're going to be working with our, with two council members. We have council member Taveras. She is the council member. She was elected to represent District Two in PG County back in 2014. District Two just covers over Adelphi, Brentwood, Chilum, North Berthwood, Langley Park, Mount Rainier, Lewisdale, and Hyattsville, which is also where our church is located. So she is our council member. And also, we have with us council member Hawkins, Mr. Calvin Hawkins. He was elected in 2018 to be the at-large representative for Prince George's County Council. And as such, member, council member Hawkins represents all of the county. The way I was explaining to one of my friends earlier, his role is, if you're not very, if you're not very familiar with the setup of how the council is, works within the county, if you think of the House of Representatives, he is like the Speaker of the House. So he is the one who goes out there and says, hey, I'm representing everyone, and I matter. I mean, you all matter too, but he, he has a big say in a lot of things. So it's very important that he's with us today. So it's an honor and a privilege to have him with us, as well as our council member Taveras. So let's dive into some of these questions about anything.
Sure. Before we carry on, just a little more depth into these two individuals. I'm happy that our church is partnering with them into exploring the concerns and the situations that are going on around the world, and then specifically to Prince George's County. And I would like to just publicly thank the both of them for their service in the county, as well as in Hyattsville, for what they do with the food pantry programs that many churches and other entities and schools have. Councilwoman Taveras is responsible for providing the food at our church currently for our food pantry, wherein we went from a hundred to nine hundred, being able to service nine hundred persons. And we deeply thank you, Councilwoman Taveras. We know that you are working hard. I heard things about you being up at the schools and different places, knowing that you have your own life to deal with during this crisis that we're all in. You still make it a point to go above and beyond for your community, as you have pledged to do, and we're grateful that you have stood by your pledge. And Councilman Hawkins, we were able to learn, dealing with the southern parts of Maryland, that you indeed are doing the same thing, providing food pantries, providing food for those pantries, and making sure that in this season, you are holding to the oath that you two took. And so we'd just like to applaud the both of you and thank you for doing so. And so we have no fear that even with this subject of police brutality and various circumstances around policing, that you will have a strong ear and voice in it, just as you have had during COVID-19 and other times. So we'd like to thank you for the partnership, and we look forward to this conversation and then the execution that will follow. So thank you so much, lady and gentleman. Jason, Mr. McFarland?
All right. So we're just going to get started with a couple of questions here. So one question that I saw earlier that really piqued my interest, it really piqued my interest. So the question was, and let me pull it up so that I can not miss word any of this. So they said PG County School, Public Schools have pioneered the use of restorative practices to reduce the school-to-prison pipeline. What opportunities does the county have to use restorative practices more widely in the criminal justice system?
While the council members are thinking through their response, I'd like to remind everyone that if you do have a question and you're on Zoom with us, you can use the raise hand function feature in order to be recognized by us. Everyone else, please use the chat rooms on Facebook and otherwise in order to and send All right. So we will turn to our council members at this time. If you'd like to give any opening remarks, please do so, and then Mr. McFarland can either repeat the question, or you can give your response. Council members, thank you so much.
Thank you. I, I just want to, sorry. I want, I did, I did have some introductory remarks, because I think that we, particularly myself and council member at large Hawkins, have been working very hard on the issues that are happening in the county with regards to policing. So I want to thank you, Pastor, Pastor Smith, and, and Metro SDA for everything that you guys are doing on the ground, and for everybody in the community that is here today. And I see a couple of people from the community, like Magali, who are, were fighters on the ground, and I just thank you for all being here. As much as I, I have been angered and saddened by the deaths of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery, I'm uplifted by the outpouring of community action and your voices, your participation, your engagement. I mean, that's what's going to make this possible. So when Metro SDA and I wanted to host this event, we just wanted to bring everybody together to give you an opportunity to discuss policing in the county and face many of the challenges that we have here. In the last year, Prince George's County Police was involved in two deaths of individuals and a grand injury of a third. And I just wanted to go over about some of the, some of the issues that we've had just this past year, because we've talked a lot about what's been happening nationally, but let's talk about what's happening at home. So on September 2019, Lenard Shaw was shot dead by six Hyattsville police officers, three Prince George's County police officers, and one Mount Rainier police officer. On October 2019, Demonte Ward Blake was paralyzed after being stopped and pulled over by a Prince George's County police officer. And I mean, like I said, he was left paralyzed from a traffic stop, and his girlfriend and six-year-old child were in the car with him. On January 20th, William Green was lethally shot while handcuffed, sitting in the front seat of Michael Owens Jr.'s police cruiser. These are cases that are difficult. They're different. But none of these men should have died. Only William Green's murder has been fired and charged. The Hyattsville police officers who were on leave for Sean's death were recently brought back to work. There, and there is some good news. During the FY21 budget in council, the council just approved the funding of, I want to say, body, body worn cameras for every cop officer on the beat. I've been pushing for this since last year, and, and as well as I joined forces with council member Hawkins to push this agenda of a three-part proposal to increase transparency in policing. So we were close allies and co-sponsors in this work, and we were told to hold off on some of these bills, but the county executive did pull through in her promise to deliver funding for the cameras. As part of this three-part proposal, we were able to pass the Community Inclusiveness Act, which prohibits county law enforcement from asking about immigration status and collaborating with immigration enforcement. Now, I want to push past the last part of that proposal, which is to regulate county police use of gang databases. Police departments across the county use gang databases to keep track of those they suspect as gang members. But there is no transparency on the criteria that qualifies you to be put on a gang database. It could be where you live. It could be who your family is. We really just do not know. The use of these databases reinforces the criminalization of Black and Brown communities. So this legislation brings oversight to this policing tool, and including to notify people when they're added to the database and the process of disputing that. And related to this, we're also looking to, to introduce surveillance and community safety bill that would require law enforcement to come to the county council before beginning to use any new surveillance technologies. So, and because this is for the future of policing, that's where policing is heading. But I'd like to add that I think that there is also room to consider that the county police department budget very carefully for the fiscal year. We've had a lot of needs, so we can revisit redirecting our funding for issues like the use of SROs inside of schools and things like that. But I do think that there is a need to closely work with our, our policing officials. Though they are close allies of mine in terms of the work that we do inside the community. And so we, we don't want to just turn our backs on them. So I look forward to hearing your thoughts and questions and your concerns about what you'd like to see happen. With regards to restorative practices, I believe they, they are critically important. I believe that there is a strong need to have mental health providers inside the schools. We've been able to do that in Northwestern High School with the use of a program through La Clínica del Pueblo called Mi Refugio, and it's been incredibly powerful to, to, to be able to include and address the needs of that, particularly most recent arrivals, so that they don't fall into gangs and things like that because of being ostracized for being recent arrivals here in the country. So those are some of the things that I've been working on here in my district, and I'm very supportive of other programs that do similar things throughout the county.
Thank you for this opportunity. Councilmember Tavoris, can you hear me? Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir. We can hear you.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity, Councilmember Tavoris, to participate with you in this very important and timely discussion. Mr. McFarland, I look forward to your questions, but I will tell you, horrified by what happened to George Floyd in Minneapolis, we are called to fight harder for equal justice, common humanity, and civility. As part of this call, and a part of the call that is ours as responsible individuals, particularly those of us who have been called and have the honor of serving in elected office. Denny and I serve on the county council, and as a member of the county council, we continue to do the critical work with you and our community partners to achieve the criminal justice reform and police accountability that we all are looking for. Last week, our chair, council member Todd Turner, shared with us, "To ensure change, our pain must be used to move us forward, not to tear us backward." This work begins at home, and the call we are having tonight begins us in our moving in the right direction to bring about the accountability, the change that we all are seeking. Thank you for this opportunity. Mr. McFarland, I look forward to any question you may have for me. And again, thank you, Councilmember Tavoris, for this opportunity. And Pastor, thank you for your kindness, opening your church up to us tonight.
Thank you, thank you. Well, one of the big questions that we've had in kind of one of the fronts of this whole townhouse meeting is defunding the police. What does that look like in PG County? And how can we make that a positive, like, move forward?
Denny, you want to go first?
Yeah, I mean, we're hearing a lot about defunding. Truth be told, that, that to me is a little bit of a red flag, because we don't have a lot of money in the county. The truth is that about sixty percent to almost seventy percent of our funding goes to school. So our prioritization is in the right place. Our number one priority, compared to maybe other areas across the country, is education. That is the number one area where we fund in the county. Second, the second area is the umbrella of public safety. So that, so that includes fire, that includes police, corrections, sheriffs, state attorney. So that's the second umbrella, under the umbrella of, of public safety, Department of Homeland Security and such. So while I believe that, yes, we shouldn't be trying to militarize our police, we want to make sure that when somebody calls, there is a police response in an area. And we have been challenged in the county, primarily on the south part of the county, in District Nine and District Eight. We have had challenges where folks have called and people are not responding. Sorry, that's my dog, in a timely fashion. He wants to be part of the conversation. Oh, my goodness. He, he's gonna just, he's the one that runs the house. I'm sorry. So, so the thing is that, so we want to make sure that, that we're sensitive to the fact that when people are calling, police actually gets to respond. So there is, there is a pushback in our county where they, we have a very close relationship with our police officers, because that's their brother, that's their uncle, that's their sister. You know, that's somebody's family member that's working inside the county through the police department. And so people look very kindly upon the police department within this county, compared to other areas in the, in the nation, like Baltimore, New York, Chicago. Those are very different animals. As, honey, as somebody who grew up in, in New York, I can tell you that.
Well, as, just to interject a second, when it comes to defunding, and you mentioned New York, New York and Los Angeles have started some defunding, or have put some defunding recommendations on the table. Can you explain a little bit what defunding is? Because I think there may be two schools of thoughts out there that people have. It could be defunding, meaning reassigning funds to other areas. What does that really mean? Or is it defunding, we, people want to eradicate police altogether and use more community-based safety systems? So a clear understanding of what defunding really is, I think, would be helpful for residents. Either one, please, can answer.
Cal, can you start talking?
Yes, yes.
We passed our funds. Let me get some bacon.
For the dog, I think she means.
Yes, yes. Here I come now. When you talk about the funding, can you hear me okay? Yes. When you talk about the funding, the county police in Prince George's County, one thing to answer your question, the funding to most people means to abolish funding to that particular agent, agency. In this case, we're talking about the police department. But here in Prince George's County, under many of the council, senior council members who have returned as a result of being reelected, they have been really working over the years with the former county executive. Now we're working with the current county executive, new council members as well, to, our defunding terminology, if you will, is we're decreasing the police overall budget so that we could put more funding in health and human services initiatives, because that's where we're focusing a lot of our attention. And again, that's based on, before the unfortunate and untimely death of George Floyd, our county had been working on some reform with the police department. So we are pretty comfortable that we're moving in the right direction. And of course, with all this going on, as we move forward, we will continue to reevaluate and be what we've been in the past, very transparent about sharing that information with the public. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a question, our first question from Facebook. So Brian Banks said, "Between 2014 and 2021, the police budget grew by thirty percent, while community services, such as family services, housing and community development, social services, the library, community college, grew, grew as much as like sixteen percent in the same period, while the police budget grew twice as much as the community services in the past seven years. The gap between a police and community services increased by over two hundred percent over the past seven years." So if we are moving forward to defunding the police, and we are trying to allocate our funds to what are more pressing matters, such as the community and our food banks, our housing and community development, social services, how are we making that transition to enforcing that without militarizing our communities?
Oh, Denny, are you there yet, or you want me to continue to go?
No, no. I, I mean, I could just mention the fact that we were, we were challenged with the fact that we had to accurately reflect the budget for overtime of police and other, and other first responders. And we also had to account for the, what they call the attrition of, of the, of the police force and at all, all the police corrections, all, at all levels, that we're trying to fully fund to make sure that we have the appropriate number of classes to come in every year, because we don't have enough. But I agree, I agree that I, that that's been to me very concerning, that we do need to put in more money in these other areas of healthcare, particularly affordable housing. And I just want to remind folks that, that it was for the very first time during our watch that we were able to fund the Housing Trust Fund to, to five million dollars over the last several years, for the first time in the history of it being created. That had never happened before. So we have, and we've also funded the, the study for affordable housing. And while I'm not saying I agree again, that we need so much more investment in social services than we are doing now, I'm, I'm also just being sensitive to the fact that there are some challenges that are happening at the, I, I would have to look at those numbers, because I, I'm not, I do not see ourselves having increased by two hundred percent some of the, I would have to look at the numbers myself to feel comfortable responding that we've been able to increase that month, that amount of money on the, on the public safety side, because we've, we've increased substantially on, on, on education. We went from a million and five to over a million and two billion, two point two billion dollars in, in school, in schooling.
So to respond to that.
I'm good. Go ahead.
So I'm looking here at the, the budget, the approved budget for 2021 and 2020. So when we look at the crime reduction and safe neighborhoods section on page 11, we look at the police department. It says that there was a five percent increase over the course of the full year 2019, and it's to implement about a hundred officers. But when I also look at 2021, there is also a, an increase of three point eight million to add a hundred and twenty officers. So over the, this year and next year, there seems to be an incentive to, based on these files, to add two hundred and twenty officers to the force.
And Mr. McFarland, due to attrition and other areas, although you see those numbers, we have not gotten those many recruits to satisfy those numbers. So although you may think they're high, but the county council supports those numbers along with the county executive, because again, based on the data that our police department and public safety agencies have collected, though, that's the amount of individuals we would need to have a, a, a police department that supports, serve and protect our county. But more importantly, you may know this, Prince George's County is at an all-time low in crime. The crime reduction is impressive. The people, if you really check, you will see, and we have our issues in Prince George's County with our police department, but they are out in the but they are out in the public and there are reform going on. And I think where Prince George's County is, based on uh, Black Lives Matter and many other issues that have come to the forefront, I believe we're in a position to even get a better police department with a better relationships to the uh, communities they serve. And I'm looking forward to your continued involvement in moving us in that direction.
And I just want to say, I just want to mention the fact that there is a large contingency within the police department that is looking to retire. So when we talk about attrition, as these people retire, we need a new batch of people coming in so, to replace them. That's, that's really what we're talking about. That's what the numbers, uh, the analytics show behind that. And you could see that, um, if you want to dig in really deep on that, the, the person to contact is Ms. Anya, and she's the one that does the um, audits and investigation report that coincides with the, with the defense of why we are funding the, the, the department as we are during the budget season. Thank you.
Okay, um, so another concern that we have is within the conversation of defunding the police is also relocating responsibilities from solely the, the police department. So when we call nine one one, we know that if we are, if someone is hurt, if someone is in need of medical assistance, we're going to request an EMT or an ambulance. If our house is on fire, we call the fire department. But the spectrum for the police department is so broad, would it be helpful is if that spectrum was specified to certain areas? So either creating a, a specific branch or just relocating those responsibilities to different areas?
I think you're on point with your question. Uh, I believe all of that is open, everything happening with our police department in Prince George's County is open for discussion. And I believe we can have some wholesome, fruitful, honest, hard discussions, uncomfortable discussions. Because if we're going to become that beloved community, that beloved county that we're attempting to become, we have to have some very hard, uncomfortable conversations moving forward. Denny?
I agree with you. I, I disagree with what you said.
If I could slide in here a moment, um, we have a question that came in that actually has some eight, uh, eight uh, ideas or thoughts that could be helpful. It says, "The latest example of police brutality have gripped the nation. We know that we also have our own problem with police violence in Prince George's County." The, actually, uh, to correct this person, uh, Langley Park is in Montgomery County, but it neighbors our church. So uh, Langley Park, where officers were recently caught on tape kicking a man. Campaign Zero just identified eight research-backed police reforms that law enforcement agency can im, can immediately implement that could reduce police violence by up to seventy-two percent. These eight reforms are banning chokeholds and strongholds, require de-escalation, require, require warnings before shootings, require exhausting all possible alternatives before shooting, duty to intervene and stop excessive force by other officers, ban shooting at moving vehicles, require a use of fire, of, require a use of force, um, of force, and require uh, comprehensive reporting each time an officer uses force or threatens to do so. These reforms don't require a vote of new legislation, but can be decided by our county executive and police chiefs. What can we do to ensure that we implement these eight reforms in Prince George's County?
So.
I'll go ahead, Denny.
So first of all, Senator Will Smith is putting in a bill at the, at the State House talking about these kinds of issues. I agree that we could do that now, especially my, my, in my mindset is that I think we need to be looking at what was put away and set aside by, in, in terms of the community police, the twenty-first century community policing studies that were done under the Obama administration that tackled these very issues. So I do think that we should have, um, I would say, write to your county executive um, to make sure that these are things that, that she signs on to that pledge out of the Obama Foundation for, for the mayors that have already signed on, like Lightfoot out in Chicago, um, Bowser in DC, um, and, and several other um, leaders and mayors across the country. These are things that we could do right now, and I agree that we should be supportive of this within this county, especially given, like I said, I highlighted, I highlighted when I first spoke about incidents, incidents that occurred in this county. Two, the Lennar shot happened in this district, as well as the kicking of that man last, last Sunday or last weekend that happened in this district as well. And we've had other incidents that have occurred in this district that don't make the count, that make, that make the county policing look very good. So we do, because we have a very, very vulnerable population. So we, we need to desperately um, work to implement those kinds of whole. And I just want to say that we also set aside three hundred thousand dollars to address reentry programs. And that's, I think of, for the first time in a very long time. Uh, this was uh, spearheaded by Calvin Hawkins to, to put in, set aside money for, for a reentry, and I applaud him on that.
Thank you. Also, may I respond to the pastor's question? Uh, a gentleman, Mark Levy, uh, sometime yesterday, uh, sent an email with the eight areas of concern you referenced, uh, and our county police chief Hank Stewinski responded to it and banned chokeholds and strangleholds. Yes, chokeholds and corridor restraints are explicitly prohibited by the department. That's the county police department. Number two was required de-escalation. Yes, the ex, de-escalation is a fundamental part of our practices, is included in our curriculum for both annual in-service training. These training takes place in the classroom, uh, in different scenarios. If you like, so I don't read all eight. Uh, Denny, can you uh, email this to the pastor so she can get it out? Uh, because I think it's important that they have uh, the actual Chief Stewinski responses to those eight uh, areas of concern.
Sure, send that, send it to me and Julieta and we'll forward it over.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Let me jump in, um, so for the, for the average person, for the average person that is watching this, if, with the, the moving forward of implementing these, these restrictions and these um, these laws and rules so that we can avoid police brutality, what is the role that they can play to make sure that these laws and acts and policies are put into place quickly and effectively?
You, let me ask, you mean what police can do to make sure that they can institute?
No, no, like, as someone who is watching, what is the role that I can play to ensure that these policies are moving forward, that these things are happening quickly?
Stay vigilant, stay vigilant, stay asking questions from your elected officials, make sure that the ball isn't dropped, and um, join organizations that are working on these issues on the county and on the ground. And uh, and, and when it's time, if there are bills, come out and advocate for them. I mean, the thing is that most oftentimes, people don't advocate for bills, or they don't even testify, they don't even bother to show up. But there are, there are, there are like maybe ten people, I'll say. I know their names, I know where they're from, because they come out, I don't know what they do, it's a C, they're seniors, obviously, most of them. But it's like they wake up in the morning, they check out what, what bills have popped up, and they have a statement every time. And you know, there is like Ms., Ms. Cavett's out in Indian Head. You know, there are people that are on it. They check us all the time, and I'll just say, especially being millennials and youth, I, I recommend the same.
So I have a follow-up question to that statement. How can you as council members and as a county make it more accessible for the common person to know when these bills are being put out, to know when these things are being enacted, so that we can advocate?
Um, well, I don't, I don't know about how other council members operate, but what I do is that I have town halls in my district where I discuss, I discuss the budget, I have listening sessions, I discuss my town hall, let's say, my legislative plans. In what, like, for example, these things that I'm, these things are not something foreign to my civic associations, to the organizations that I work with. These are things that I'm, uh, I'm, I'm organ, I'm organizing with people like Community Justice, um, Reed Temple. Uh, and so I, I'm, I'm trying to, I connect with people, and now you're a new partner. So I'll be connecting with you guys too now. And now that I, uh, we're feeling closer in terms of how we're working, I'll include you in the fold the way I include Dr. Kearney from Turner AME, you know? So it's all about bringing new people into the fold so that, that they know everything that we're working on.
And may I add to that, uh, Brother McFarlane, one thing you can do in your peers and then everyone that's listening and viewing this, uh, you can get involved by, just like you had invited us to come tonight, invite the police chief, invite other community leaders to come and just have dialogue and discussion about what's going on in our county. Because even listening to you say, how can we make it easier for individuals and other citizens to know about what's going on? Now, that's a great question, I wish I had the answer. I could tell you how it was before, uh, pre-COVID nineteen. Now that everything's virtual, our council administration, they're trying to work to make us more accessible while keeping us within the laws and what we have to abide by to have meetings. Tomorrow, we will vote on stuff to change how we do our district council meeting, because everything's virtual because of the social distancing and other issues. So whatever uh, ideas you or anyone on the call may have, please send it to us so that we can attempt to implement it, if, if they are practical uh, recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm going to slide in here. Um, I need to correct something I said. I think the, the account did happen in Prince George's County, not Montgomery with the Langley Park. My zone got a little mixed up, but I do believe that was PG. Um, my, my um, question uh, deals with the mental health requirements or check-ins for our officers in the county. Um, do Prince George's County officers, are they mandated to have mental health check-ins um, at any specific rate so that they are being evaluated for their uh, ability and their health and their function to be able to see some of these traumatic and very stressful things? Is there a place for them to be able to uh, come down from all of that and receive some of the mental health that they should be receiving? And if it is not a requirement, um, is that a suggestion that can be heard today? That there is a, a mental health check-in with a therapist that should take place at a reasonable frame, a reasonable timeframe, not once a year, but something more closer to once a month, if that does not take place, is that reasonable?
Has, I heard, uh, I heard uh, County Executive Austin Brooks speak on it last week. I heard her speak two weeks ago. One of the initiatives I know she and her team were working on, uh, how often a, a police officer goes in for a mental health evaluation and, you know, if their activities while he or she is serving and, and their incidents, negative incidents would say, hey, based on these actions, this person here may not be fit to stay on our streets serving and protecting our citizens, because these are some triggers that should alarm us. And she's speaking of that, but unless Denny knows what I will promise to do, I'll look into what's in place now and shoot you an email on it, but I'm not for certain. But I do know the county exec has her team working on some legislation to address exactly what you referenced in your question.
Sure.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not aware of what the process is inside the police department, but I do think that it's highly needed because um, we want to make sure that the well, mental wellbeing of individuals that are on, in the front lines are well taken care of. And I, and I speak as somebody who, I'm sure Cal can speak to this as well, but um, I, I was a first responder in, working with FEMA, and that was very challenging. I mean, coming back home is like coming back home from war, you got to regroup. And so I can definitely tell you that that was something that is incredibly needed, especially for individuals working in the front lines. Thanks.
All right, so we're just going to take this moment to see if there are any questions within the, the viewership. Are there any questions within the viewership?
We have one in the chat room, Mr. McFarlane.
We have one in the chat room, let's see.
Sure.
Okay, so here from Crystal Joseph, her question is, "Is there a hotline to call when you feel like you've been wrongfully harassed or racially profiled by the police? If not, can one be put in place?"
We have one. Uh, can we leave the number with you? Uh, Mr. McFarlane?
Of course, do you have that number on hand?
Yes, I'm looking it up now.
And we have the, the Citizens' um, Complaint Overview Panel that addresses uh, inappropriate activities or behaviors on, by police officers. So I'm, what I'm looking to do, if possible, is see how we can strengthen the cop, that particular commission.
Okay, so just a little bit more on the mental health aspect of our police officers and our, yeah, police officers, like, talk a little bit more about what, what's going to be put in place to ensure that our police officers are in a state of mind where if they are faced in a, in an overwhelming situation, that they will not panic, that there won't be a, an excuse of, "I was afraid for my life," that we can keep them, their mental fortitude strong. And what are the, like, what are the plans that you guys have in place?
Well, I mean, for me, the issue, I, I haven't seen, I haven't seen issues like the ones you highlight. What I've seen is individuals that were not properly de-escalating situations. And so I do think that we need to be able to have proper training to de-escalate situations, like the situation of, of Lennar Shan. Um, we have to also have in place um, proper training on what, what it, what does it mean to deal in a situation where somebody is mentally unstable? Those are very sensitive issues. Right now, we're using our prison system as a holding cell to address the mental health needs of the population and maybe even the homeless. And that's a problem, right? So those are, how do we have police properly addressing those kinds of needs in the community? And so those are the concerns that I have. That, that we're looking to see how we can properly address them by, through proper training, you know?
And I'm going to continue to rely on the medical experts on how best uh, to support Denny and my colleagues in ensuring that we have some mental health uh, legislation in place.
So, and there, at present, there is no mandate for mental health check-ins for our officers at present?
I'm not sure of that, I have to look into it, I don't know that answer, I apologize.
No, it, it's okay, we understand. Now, if when you find that there is uh, no mandate for it, how do we go about putting our suggestion for that to be something that officers are required to do?
I personally heard you tonight said, and we will now again work with Denny, and we will keep you informed based on what we find out uh, about whether we have anything in place and what our next steps will be. And we will get your input as we move forward.
Received.
And keep in mind, the county executive, uh, is on the same wavelength with you based on what I heard her say last week and two weeks before that.
Received.
Awesome. So we have a question in the chat. The question says, what systems are there in place to protect whistleblowers? I believe that the problem is not that the officers do not want to speak up, but that they're afraid of the repercussions of telling on their colleagues. So what can be put into place so that if a officer sees something that they deem is excessive, is unnecessary? What is the, what is the, the precautions and the safety measures to protect those whistleblowers?
What I was gonna say about that, there are measures in place, but that's one of those difficult challenges where each individual who, uh, wears the badge to protect us and serve us has to make that decision, uh, how he or she's gonna deal with it. Because there are measures in place, trust me, there are. And, but it's that individual officer, uh, being accountable to the badge, he, or the oath he swore to uphold or accepting the peer pressure of one of his colleagues. You know, and, and quite honestly, when you look at what happened to George Floyd, you saw three individuals, or at least two individuals, uh, working to protect the code, the blue wall of silence or whatever they were protecting instead of doing what their professional training had taught them over the years. They, if they probably had a second to take any of that back, they would probably have gotten that general, that guy off, that officer, that corrupt officer, off George Floyd's neck. But again, they didn't. So that's what I'm saying. We have measures in place, but it's that individual in that moment of challenge, what he or she does to either make that situation right or look the other way.
So, uh, over the past two years, uh, Delegate Alonso Washington has introduced a bill to establish a use of force statute for the police officers in Maryland. Why has that not been passed? And do you think that it would be passed now?
I personally, if individuals like you, uh, do not begin to, uh, rather write or call your state delegates and state senators when they get to a napless, uh, 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 I believe we will experience the same situation, but something is different going on in the state of Maryland and around this country. Hopefully, we can harness this energy, this anger, this pain, and ensure that not just at the state level, the local level, and the federal level, we do what we need to do as your elected representatives to get this thing passed. Uh, Delegate Alonso Washington is probably one of the more effective state legislators. And if it has failed for two years, then, uh, it, it, it will take a little more grassroots organizing and working with him to see where he see the challenges are. But that's the kind of, uh, uh, time we're living in where you spoke about this bill that Delegate could not get, uh, passed for two years. Now, maybe because of this new renewed energy, we could work with him to help him get it passed. And while we doing it, we can go after the law enforcement officers' bill of rights. That's another one that allow police officers 10 days before you could even interview them or ask them any question. And that's something we need to speak out against and get changed as well in the state of Maryland.
Yeah, and I do think that there's something, this may be very controversial, what I'm about to say. But I do think that if you are convicted, you should, of a, of, of some type of crime as a police officer, you would, uh, you will lose your pension. So I do think that there's something to be said for, like, if, if we institute certain policies where individuals are hurt that way, I do think that, um, I, I just have an idea that we've gotta bring a strategy where you work on it from the inside, meaning that the cops are regulating, they're gonna start to, they, to put it on them to regulate themselves. Because if we don't, but it has to be like where they, if, if they, if they are penalized, they're gonna lose something for it. Because it's not gonna, it's not gonna work.
To follow up with that, is there any, uh, do you have any plans to put that into place? Where if a cop is, is found using excessive force, uh, doing something that they're not supposed to? Is, is there a plan that you have to make sure that they do lose pension? Or that they are no longer eligible to continue work because they have been convicted of a crime?
Yes, I mean, they, most likely, even that event investigation is started, the person is put on, the person is either put on administrative leave, sometimes paid, sometimes not, depending on how egregious. For example, the, the gentleman that, that was, um, was found essentially sexually assaulting a woman behind the TikTok in my district. And it might have, it might seem that he had done this with other women on the force. He was take, he was, he was penalized. Again, whether it went to the degree of his pension, I do not know. But I do think that there's something to that conversation that I think we need to engage in.
And how are you making that conversation a reality?
We're looking to put on, to put in a bill. I, I, I didn't, I didn't really wanna mention it because it's still too new of a conversation, but I, I've teamed up with somebody to put in that bill.
Awesome, awesome. So I just wanna take this moment just to remind our viewership that if you do, if you would like to bring your question forward, just raise your hand if you look on the participants', uh, section of your Zoom call. You can click participant and click raise hand. And from there, we can give you the opportunity to speak. All right.
Brother McFarlane, while they're looking, uh, hopefully you and everyone that hosted this tonight will continue to have these kind of very important and timely conversations and invite some more community leaders on so your listening audience could hear different perspectives, because you all have some great questions in there directly to the issue.
No, we thank you for it.
Appreciation.
Yes. So in December 2018, two police associations representing Black and Hispanic officers and 12 current and former officers filed a lawsuit against Prince George's County alleging that the police department discriminates against Black and Hispanic employees and retaliates against those who report racist or inappropriate conduct involving white officers. What is the status of this lawsuit?
That lawsuit is still in the court. I would like to say also about that, uh, question you asked. At the time, uh, I was working in the county Prince George, former Prince George's, at the time, he was the county executive with Sharon Baker's office. And I worked very closely on that case with the Black officers and Hispanic officers that brought those charges forward and those allegations forward. So I'm very familiar with it, but it's still in the courts. And, uh, look forward to seeing the outcome of that very important case.
Yeah, and I believe that there's also still a, um, a pending outcome from the Department of Justice as well.
So we have one raised hand from a Camille. What was?
I think that name is Correll.
Correll, okay.
I think they can.
Involved in white officers. What is the status of this lawsuit?
That lawsuit.
I'm sorry, can somebody repeat the question? I didn't hear it.
Uh, question you asked. At the time, uh, I was working in the county Prince George, former Prince George's, at the time, he was the county executive with Sharon Baker's office. And I worked very closely on that case with the.
Well, there seems to be a bit of a technical difficulty, but we have the question in the, in the chat. Correll says, there were several complaints slash it's issues, 18, against the officer that killed George Floyd. What protocols are there in place?
Yeah, and I believe that there are also.
Train other officers.
Can you hear me, Mr. McFarlane?
Yes, sir.
I was gonna say, that's one of the things getting back to you've passed as well as County Exec, uh, Angela also broached. Because someone could have those amount of negative actions in his or her personnel file and still be out on the street with a weapon. Uh, says, we got a lot of work to do. There's no excuse for it, and I'm not making any. I slept it. I didn't see this kind of, uh, reality among, and that's not just our officers, anyone. So we definitely need to have a, a follow-up conversation. So you and everyone that asked that question will know what we found out and what we plan to implement. And I guess we can get that information to you from, uh, back to Denny to virus.
Awesome. So tying this back to the original question with the, the court case, the lawsuit, uh, how can the county ensure that officers do not face retaliation when they report these bad behavior? Because we are seeing, we're seeing a sort of hierarchy within a lot of police, uh, departments where the veterans are, 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 are forcing the rookies to just be quiet because they're new. So how can we prevent this? And how is the county ensuring that there is no retaliation and that this lawsuit can be pushed? So that there can be a, a bill or a law that will, that will enforce this positive behavior from these whistleblowers?
Truth be told, um, truth be told, um, my only thing is that whoever is whistleblowing and they feel retaliated against, they would have to sue. I mean, literally, that is the only solution that I see. Because the wall of blue is strong. The wall of blue is strong and is united and it's, uh, is formidable here in the county and is formidable in the state. Um, so to me, the individuals that I have worked with have been pushed out of the, of the, have been pushed out of the force to, to, to admit a lawsuit.
So my question to you is, how do we break down that wall of blue? Because as police officers, their duty is to protect and to serve the community. And if they are not, and if they're neglecting that, that, that call to duty that they have.
In my opinion, in my, in my opinion, I think we need to first start looking to make sure that the police lives inside the county. To me, one of the first things that.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I would like to see more police officers that in this county live inside the county. They live outside the county. They're as their neighbors, as their friends, as their family. You know, they see it as a place to go to work. And there's the other issue that we need to contend with, that if somebody leaves one police force a bad record because of domestic violence or because of sexual assault or because of inappropriate behavior, they're part of that police force, just like that. There's no record, there's no containment to say this individual shouldn't be rehired into another police force. They'll just move a couple of states and be picked up by another police force.
Okay, so right now, we have a raised hand from Duran Lewis, Duran Lewis.
Hi, can you hear me? This is actually her son, Adante.
Oh, hello, Adante. How are you doing?
I'm good. Um, I just wanted to comment on, uh, what was just said in terms of, uh, police officers being pushed out. Um, I think that's really the issue, uh, that's occurring with the police officers. I feel like a lot, um, are seeing things that are to be reported, uh, but they don't report it because in essence, if they report it, a lot of times, nothing happens to the officer that they report on. But then they are pushed out of the department. So they remove themselves as a good officer from the department, you know, helping their community. And the officer that they report on is still in the department. So, uh, you know, I want to know, you know, sort of, you know, this was kind of stated before, but can there be some sort of anonymous tip, tipping to internal affairs or something where these officers don't, don't have to face the backlash and be pushed out of the, the jobs where they want to help the community?
I think that that's, I think that that's important. I think that one of the things that we need to do, the first line for that is the body cameras. It gets people, but acting on their best behavior. That's why we push this so hard. Because without it, we have no police accountability as to what happened. It's only he say, she say. So unless there's a camera, you know, somebody filming. And so I think that body worn cameras are the first, um, are the, is the first step to fi- figuring out what, what actually happened on the scene from the perspective of the, of a police officer.
So question, is there any, are there any policies? Or is there a policy in place that if a police officer is found to turn off their body camera or to tamper with that evidence? Is there any policy to, to put in place immediate termination?
So that, what I would like to see is discipline, uh, some kind of a discipline mark being put on their record. We wanna follow out, because I still wanna put in the bill for body worn cameras, even though we funded it, that doesn't mean that with the coming of a new county exec, that they'll, that we will, let's say, not refund the replacement of those cameras. The big cost to the, the cameras is the storage of the film. So addressing that. So we are looking to implement ACLU's best practices um, in terms of saving the film and being able to ensure that the police officers are, are complying with the use of the camera. Um, but there, there has to be some disciplinary, uh, address to them turning it off. I agree on that.
And is there an effort to make sure that this disciplinary action will be taking place?
So that's, that's, I'm, I'm putting in a bill for it. I'm putting in a bill to, to kind of institute what, how long are we gonna hold the film for? And what happens? And like, what are the steps? So we're looking at ACLU, uh, to legalize ACLU's best practices with regards to, to the usage of body worn cameras. We don't have anything, we don't, right now, we don't have any policy in place other than what self, what's been self instituted by the police force and the county executive. And again, that could change with the changing of the leadership. So we wanna put something more legal in place that says this is something that everybody has to do, similar to the policy that was done with community policing, community inclusiveness. Meaning that the police said, oh, we're not asking people for their immigration status. Well, if, if you're asked, if you're saying that, you don't have an issue with that, then you shouldn't have an issue with me putting it in a legal form and documenting that in, into a legislation, into a legislative piece.
So my question is, within this bill that you put forth, the, is the punishment for turning off your body cam immediate termination?
At this time, it's not. That's not something, I don't think it goes that far. I mean, because we have to find out what happened. I mean, is it, is it that they didn't turn it on immediately? Is it that, you know, I think that there, I think that there has to be some variance to whatever the situation is. Um, I think termination could be if there's a pattern. If there's a pattern of the turning off of the camera, I do believe that 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 could be grounds for terminating, for termination.
But a ca- uh a police officer turning off their body camera, that is that that's, that should be considered tampering with evidence. So if there is a a body camera and there and we allow it to get to the point where there's a pattern, is that not too late? Is that not reactive as opposed to proactive?
I mean, I'm, I'm open. I'm open to 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 hearing that. I do think, but I do think we have to hear both sides of the issue on that particular issue. Um, it could be that a camera is is dysfunctional. Um, there could be a couple of reasons why. Um, so I'm, it's not that I'm against it. I just think that we just want to be able to hear both sides of the issue before before moving forward to give everybody a chance to voice their concerns. But I'm, I'm open to hearing that.
Okay, okay. Uh, so we have one last question from Joan Branch, from Joan Branch. Uh, Joan Branch?
Good evening. Um, thank you. Hi, thank you for this um presentation. This is very insightful. I do want to ask whether, how much emphasis how much emphasis is being placed on considering pre-evaluation and the whole selection process um for candidates for uh police officers? And whether or not we are considering that maybe there may be some holes that are dropped on the front end of that process?
That's a very good question. Uh, Diddy, I don't have the answer to that. Uh, our Office of Personnel and our Public Safety uh do all the screening for police officers. And Ms. Branch, I know your name and you probably have my email. Would you email me to discuss how uh is best for Diddy and I and other council members to approach that subject you just raised? I know you are very involved in mental health, so it would be a good opportunity for Diddy and I to discuss that very question with you to determine how we go about uh looking into what you just raised. If that's okay with you, Diddy, and if that's okay with you, Joan?
I'm, I'm fine with that. Um, though, I know that during Rashern Baker's time, they, they used to provide each individual that came on board with a test to self-evaluate. It wasn't, it wasn't a wrong or right answer. There is kind of like, um, I forgot what it's called. It's kind of like a color spectrum. This, it's kind of like the Myers-Briggs type assessment for for who you are, what what your behavior is, if you're hot-headed or cool-headed or friendly and talkative or or you're kind of like the hippie, free spirited type person.
Yeah, Diddy, I think she wants uh some professional involvement with the assessment at the beginning.
Yeah, the, 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 those, those types of tests show you how you respond in times of adversity, what ticks you off, what brings you on. And I, and I can just tell you because I just took one recently and I'm floored with what how, what I found out. So I can, I can definitely, it it was a, like a ten, fifteen page assessment of your, of your behaviors and mental health and, you know, not mental health, but your what what triggers you. And so I just thought that that was something that was very, and I remember that um that Baker used to give that test to individuals that were coming on board in his team. Because I took one under him as well. So.
So right now, sadly, we have to wrap up. It's been a great time having you two here. Um, any closing remarks?
Well, I want to thank everybody for coming. I, this was a very valuable time. Um, I wanted to hear a lot of people speak about their personal experiences with police. That's what I wanted to hear. Um, and I want to maybe do a follow-up conversation a little bit more about that so that and invite our police officers to hear their personal experiences with police officers in the county because that's something that's concrete. You know, um, and so if we can engage in that kind of conversation, I'll welcome another opportunity for us to reengage.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, uh Councilmember Tavarez, for this opportunity. Thank you to the Metropolitan Seven Day Eventers and Reverend Smith. Thank you. Brother McFarland, I don't know where you're going or what your goals are, but I know if you pursue a career in broadcasting and interviewing, you will be a hit, my friend. And I'm just grateful for this opportunity on a serious note to have shared in this very important conversation. Let's keep the discussion open. Let's continue to know that Black lives matter and let's do what we need to do as a community and a county to make today better than yesterday. And again, thank you for the opportunity.
Amen to that. And I, I couldn't have said it better myself. So I bless every, blessings to everybody. And thank you, Pastor Smith and and Mr. McFarland for an excellent conversation. And thank you, everybody, for coming. And um I hope we could do this again and continue to have the doors of communications open, open.
So I just want to say thank you for everyone for joining us today. Uh, it's been an amazing experience. I apologize to everyone who didn't get to get to your questions. We'll see if we can try and set up something like this again. Just expand that conversation, keep the conversation going. So, and I just want to say I appreciate Pastor Smith for giving me the honor of this position. And I thank you, both council members, for joining us today. Pastor Smith.
That's your wonderful. Thank you um to our council members. Thank you, Mr. McFarland. We appreciate all of you. Mr. McFarland, you did a wonderful job. And to our council members, we appreciate you not just for today, but for every day before this. Uh, we do see and feel what you're doing in our community and we appreciate it. We appreciate this conversation and the conversations to follow. And so we will be in touch um about doing this again and doing it very, very soon. And our young people uh want to know as well as myself, is the police chief, if you can help us get to the police chief so that that police chief can join us on a town hall so that we can do this with them as well.
We'd like to make that happen.
Yeah.
Listen, okay, so everyone heard that. She said, and he said.
And I stand with her.
Well, both of them said that, and since they're here right now, then I fully believe what they've said. So let our next session together be within the next very few weeks. Um, and by God's grace, our police chief is available so that we can um continue this conversation and put together some solid plans of execution so that there are bills in place, there are methods and trainings in place. Our church community would be more than happy to help get this mental health and the cultural training and the sensitivity training in place for our officers. We have dozens of health professionals at our church who I know would put their time out there um to ensure that whatever mental health um sessions are needed, whatever trainings of of response and cultural trainings are needed can happen. Um, and so we are happy to uh do that and partner with you all on that. So um thank you so much for this conversation. And in the next few weeks, the main word here is few, next few weeks, we will do this again. Um, and by God's grace, with our police chief. So uh everybody just have a great night. God bless each and every person. And so we'll talk again very, very, very soon. Good night.
Good night.
Amen.